But I don't know if they're for the parents or for our administration. Should I just?
Do you want to just put them on the table and if we can answer some of these?
Can I just say one more thing? The MPA did approve it today. That once you, it comes here, if you guys approve, then we can afford.
It does require, it does require board approval though.
Who will be responsible for transporting the students to Scarborough High School?
The other district.
Right.
Okay.
That's correct, that's how it works.
And will those students travel to and from games on our Scarborough bus?
I don't think that they're going to come to Scarborough before they go to a game.
Right, that, it really depends where the game is. That's how it worked with Wyndham. What made sense is that we were traveling to Wyndham and then turn around and going, you know, in another direction, then it made more sense for us to leave our school and go to the game. That's what we did and they, you know, they just made sure that they were there at the same time the bus would arrive. That way they still went in as a team and...
We charge a participation fee for our students. Will they be required to do that as well?
They should be.
That's how it, yes, yes.
What percent of your ice time will that district participate in?
In terms of a, of a cost?
Yes.
Um, I don't, I don't know if that's been thought about, Michael. I mean, did you have any?
I don't think there's going to be required to spend any, but that's speculation. Visal Gage can answer that.
Okay. I'm just putting the questions out. You may not have the answers tonight.
Well, I think, did you have?
Well, as, as, as parents of boosters, we participate in the softball and the bingo hall is our major fundraiser and the majority of that money goes to save the ice time. So as a parent of a hockey player, you're required to serve your hours at the bingo hall. So as parents of players, they would be required to do that as well. And that, so that would be their input to climbing things the ice time.
So if I could just piggyback on Jackie's a little bit. So there's no extra cost to the district at all for them to participate? They're going to bear all the costs associated with the normal student athlete participation?
Yes.
Fundraising, booster raising, and athletic fees to their, to their district?
Yes.
Who will be responsible for the supervision of the students?
The coach.
Our coach. Okay. And my last question at the moment is this. Part of the requirement is that we come up with a name that identifies both schools. And has that been discussed?
There was no, there was no. Kathleen, I didn't change the name. Um, see, that, I spoke with my, with my AD today, Chris Hughes, and when they had a meeting, that was discussed and it's going to stay Red Storm, Scarborough. There's not going to be any mention of Soccopie Valley. It's going to stay, everything's going to stay the same.
I can answer some questions for you. Sorry I'm late.
You want to catch your breath first or?
No.
I think this was last one. It's the, the naming convention.
The, um, two years ago, I began some talks with Mr. Hughes, the athletic administrator at Soccopie Valley. And he had two student athletes that were interested in playing girls hockey. He tried a number of other schools that, and he was unsuccessful as they already had co-op teams. And so we said that we would be willing to take them on. And we had our, I went to the MPA management committee today, as a matter of fact, this morning, and we petitioned for three waivers. One of them was for the six-month rule because we did not submit our application six months ahead of time. One was for school enrollment because any com- any combination team requires all the schools that are combining to have a school enrollment less than the largest school in the state. And so we had to get a waiver for that as well because we would, we would certainly be beyond that. And the third waiver that Scarborough requested was a waiver not to change our team name. And so all three waivers this morning were granted by the MPA management committee. And so we feel confident, you know, moving forward with this. Chris?
Is there any way that we'll, we'll be able to, not to differentiate them, but to distinguish the young ladies who are going to be joining from Soccopie, whether it's a patch or some other distinction on the uniform or something, so they can, or are they going to be just simply Scarborough and?
For this year, it'd be simply Scarborough for this cycle. It's a two-year cycle. And so we have permission from the MPA for these two years. And then we'd have to read this, read petition after that. And then, you know, I, I, my feeling was that we'll have some obstacles moving forward with this because it's new to Scarborough. We don't have to do combo teams. Typically, the schools that do combo teams have to do them to be able to have a team. We have not ever had to do that. We're, our enrollments are really healthy, as you know. So what we felt was that, you know, part of our identity is tied to our name. And so the case that we made was that for this first cycle, as we adjust to a combo team, that we didn't want to lose that identity as part of this process. So they granted that waiver and so it's going to be just Scarborough this first cycle and then we'll figure out a plan from there. But we wanted to just give these girls an opportunity to participate and sport hockey. Unfortunately, in our state, hockey is going the other way, actually. It is, it's an expensive sport. There are not a lot of rinks and participation levels are low. We're very fortunate in Scarborough that that's not the case, but in a lot of schools it is. And so, you know, some of the schools are struggling to be able to provide these opportunities for, for children. So we wanted to be a good association member. We, and we wanted to be able to provide this opportunity to these young ladies.
And just sorry, last follow-up question. There's no cut in girls. There's no trials, there's no cuts, correct?
There hasn't been.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't anticipate that this year. That's why we agreed to.
Yep.
If we were going to cut, then we'd have, we would have had to reevaluate that.
Understood. Thank you.
What, sorry? What year are these two young ladies that are joining the team? Are they, what, level nine, 10th, 11th, 12th?
No, I think they're juniors.
Junior and senior.
Junior and senior. Jackie? Have our hockey players been approached on this? Do they know that this is happening?
These young ladies have participated with them in the off-season and are familiar to them. And that's part of the reason and part of our petition with the MPA because there is a, there is a distance certainly between our schools. And so part of the reasoning behind this relationship is because our kids are known to these girls and these girls are known to our kids. And there's been a good relation there and the, and the coach and everybody's been involved in the process.
Christine? One more question.
Yeah.
This year, I know that there's been difficulty with ice time in the past and I know that last year, the girls' team, I'm not sure, I can't remember if the boys' team traveled up north somewhere?
Right.
I can't.
Lewiston.
They were up in Lewiston maybe. All right. That's what Chris pointed out. Thank you. Where is ice time this year? I mean, are these kids going to be traveling further? Obviously, Hyrum's not next door to Scarborough.
Yeah. So we would, we would treat this situation very much like we would treat a homeschool student, I mean, in terms of communication with, with students. So the coach will arrange for that communication. And we're very fortunate this year. I want to knock on wood a little bit, but we're very fortunate this year with our ice time. I think that there was some fear about building a rink in Scarborough. And so Orthopedic Associates, the sports complex where we've skated in the past, has really stepped up. And we're going to be exclusively running our programs out of MHG, out of, out of the Orthopedic Associates Sports Complex. All of our practices will be there. All of our games will be there. We have really exclusive ice times. And so we're very, very fortunate this year. Knocking on wood and hoping that it continues. But, and at the same time, I think that although it's slowed down a little bit, I think that there's, there's still a group that's pursuing a rink at Scarborough. And we hope that, we hope that they continue to pursue that because the town's been generous with the potential location right on campus. And so we're, we're going to be very fortunate this year. It's going to be close to us, not so close for the, for the young ladies from Soccopie Valley, but we'll, we'll work through all those, all those issues.
Thank you. Jackie?
May I ask our parent, I'm sorry, I didn't write her name down.
Kathy Doak.
Kathy.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to ask you a question, please.
Does everybody know Miss Doak? She's our, our girl booster president.
Right. Kathy, Scarborough has a reputation having involved parents. On the one hand, that's very good and sometimes it's problematic. How's your parents group going to feel if these two youngsters are getting more play time or more ice time than their daughters?
Well, I've reached out to the parents. There's several parents here that are in favor of it. And I have several emails with them, I brought with me, of parents that are in favor of it. And I've heard no negative response from any parents since Sarah's the girl joining the team.
I would hope that would be the case.
And Mike said the girls that skated in the summer program with the girls, so I think everybody's got a connection established already, as well as some of the parents even knowing the parents. So I, I think it'll be a good start.
Good. Thank you very much.
So, Mike, is, is this a request to, it says application to, for the establishment of this cooperative team? The date is July 2015. Mrs. Doak was just saying it's the one-year thing. You mentioned a cycle of two years. So is, is this a never-ending thing here?
Part of the, part of the MPA requirement is board approval from most school, school systems, and it is a two-year cycle. And so your approval tonight would allow us to move forward and, and fulfill that two-year cycle. And that's established by the MPA.
Through 2017. Anything else? Very good. All in favor?
Do we, do we have a motion?
Is there a motion yet? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move approval is printed.
Second. We're going to be on the discussion. No, seeing none. All in favor? Five plus one and one absentee. Is there anyone else wishing, wishing to speak on a topic on the agenda this evening? If so, please come to the podium. 6.0 is our workshop. 6.1, the Maine Supreme Court will be at Scarborough High School. Give a update.
David, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
David Creacher's here and I've asked David to provide the update. He's basically been organizing this with the Mary Ann Lynch, who basically organizes all of the court visits. So David, do you want to give us a brief update?
I'm here.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
We are, we are friends with the high school.
That's fine, I know, I can imagine. That's right. So we're very excited. We're actually thrilled to be able to be given the opportunity to host the Maine Supreme Judicial Court. It's going to be an October 8th date, this is a Thursday. There are three schools in the state of Maine that are going to be participating. Mount Vernon, excuse me, Mount Lou, Herman, and Scarborough High School. Some of the details that I think might interest you, we're going to have basically a courtroom transformed from where it typically is into the auditorium of Scarborough High School. Stipulations are basically, we've met, this is Legage 90, administrative team and others have met to go over the logistics piece. But the, probably what you would be most interested in is basically the Supreme Court and their personnel are allowing us, the school district, to decide basically who gets to have the opportunity to be a part of this process. So court officials, lawyers, plaintiffs, they are all going to be there. But in terms of who gets to come and, and observe this, we're going to be having all the representatives, the local representatives are going to be invited. They've already been invited by the courts. We're going to invite the school board, town council, and all the leadership members of the school district to be a part of this as well. And then the rest of this is going to be an educational opportunity for the students and staff of Scarborough High School. This is a normal school day. So we have to be able to manage and run our school. So we're not opening it up to the general public. But our plan is they all rise around 8:00 AM. They have a lawyer from Drummond Woodson, who is going to be a designated lawyer at the very beginning of each of the three cases. She will address everybody that's in attendance and basically highlight what's happening in this case. And then there are 9:00, 9:45, and 10:30 for the, for the three cases. So she addresses everybody that's in attendance and explains then what's going on. Each lawyer has 15 minutes with the justices to present their case. Then the justices leave. There's a 15-minute transition. During that time, anybody in attendance can come up and ask questions of the lawyers who are mitigating the case. And Ms. Parks from Drummond Woodson is going to be kind of the moderator of that piece. So we already know what these particular cases are because they provided them to us. So we can share this information with our students and staff. They can study and do whatever they want in advance. Questions can either be specific to the cases, they can be on the spot based on what they just observed, or they can be just about the judicial process and what happens in court cases. It's really up to us what we want to ask. So that's going to basically be the framework for each case. So 15 minutes in between, there's a transition as two lawyers are leaving or answering questions. Two lawyers are coming in to present. The justices come back and it's the same thing. It's a 30-minute, 15-15, they leave for 15 minutes. Question period for 15 minutes and then they conclude with the last piece. When that is concluded at the very end, the justices have basically offered to stay and have lunch with whoever we designate to have lunch with them. So we've basically, as a leadership, opened this up to our school just today. I shared it at a faculty meeting with our staff. They're going to share it with the students in their classes. And we're going to have students who would like to go and be a part of this process be able to decide within the next week. That's really basically the details. It's a great honor for us, a great educational opportunity. And I can tell you that everybody that we've dealt with from the Supreme Court, they have been fantastic. And they're just very excited to be bringing this court session to Scarborough High School. They toured our facility and we're very impressed with how fortunate we are to have the facility we have, as you know. And they think it's going to be a perfect setup for their needs.
And again, David, that's Thursday, October 8th, starting at 9:00 AM.
Thursday, October 8th. It begins at 9:00 AM. And it's 9:00 AM, 9:45, and 10:30 for the three cases.
And that will be on the invite that folks receive?
Yes. So television, media will be invited. That's taken care of by the court. They take care of invitations to local representatives. And then the school can decide who in addition to that. So we'll put the invitations out to you, town council, the school leadership. And we've already started the process in-house.
Questions?
Emma.
So even if students don't have like a study hall per se or something, like a free period, will they get the opportunity to go and like experience this?
Great question. So whether you have a class at that time that wants to come, or you have a class period seven and they want to come, or maybe you're a part of some student activity that student government, this type of process is something you're very interested in, any student or any staff member can come regardless of whether they have something at that time.
So is it just up, say a student wants to go not a part of any like student group or anything, they want to go like individually, can they get permission from their teacher or something to be excused from class to experience it?
Yes. It's open to all students, all staff. The only logistic thing that was tough is we were trying to decide whether we were going to have maybe freshmen and sophomore come for the first session and then another group in the second session. But you're talking about transitioning several hundred students in a 15-minute period of time where they said it's a very tight ship. We've got 15 minutes. And that's also the question and answer period. So logistically, you thought it was going to be almost impossible. So we have about a 750 seat capacity there. So we think if we just open it up, and we want, we really ideally just want whoever wants to be there to want to be there, to be honest with you. Because we have to follow all report decorum and make sure it's a very respectful process. So opening it up and having people who actually want to be there was more important to us than trying to get the entire school to come to and experience it.
And since you're on the school board, you get to put the phone up.
Couple of questions, Dave. So you answered my first question about will there be a transition of like freshman in session one and sophomore session two? So you've answered that question for me. Are there going to be some classes, like let's say a civics class or something, that's going to be required to be there, whether the students, you know, are optioning that or not?
So that was, we posed this to our staff just today. So they have an opportunity to process that and come and speak to us about how, whether they want to have their whole class go there as a part of that curriculum and that class experience, or just open it up to them. I can imagine that if the faculty teacher wants a class to go there to be exposed to this, the entire class is going to go because it'll be a part of an educational experience.
Right. And so that kind of comes into my, my other question too about, about scheduling and things. Like say you've got a seventh period social studies class, but the, the teacher thinks it's great for the students to be there. Doing any kind of period adjustments or scheduling adjustments to accommodate that? Or is it going to be just kind of a, you know, if you've got a math class that period, let's say, you're going to be excused from the math class and just still go to the social studies class at seventh period?
Right. That's kind of similar to what Emma was asking. So we want to first wait and see what type of response we get and where those responses are coming from. And then we'll take a look and see if we have to manipulate the schedule.
Okay.
There's a, a strong possibility that not all the schools are going to want to participate in this. So we'll have to continue with a normal schedule at that time. But if there's a seventh period class, civic class that wants to be a part of this and it's during period two, they will be allowed to come and do that and we'll work on excluding them from their period two class.
And then just the, the other question was, how are you going to, you're going to do the regular class transitions, how are you going to isolate the classroom or the auditorium from the regular class changes out in the rest of the school?
There won't be, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be nodding, shaking my head.
Okay.
I apologize.
That's right.
I should let you finish.
Right. I'm used to that, don't worry.
We've got you, that's okay. So we're going to turn off the bells and the entire schedule will be by voice direction. So we'll have a plan in place to make sure. We're fortunate, the beginning of it is right during our transition between period one and period two. And then the other one is going to happen a little bit, a little bit before our transition between periods two and three. It's about 9:45. So our transitions will be by voice direction. And we're going to let the court know that. So unfortunately, the auditorium is already a place where the intercom does not come in. So when we do it by voice direction, they're not going to hear it in there anyway.
I'm just thinking outside traffic. It gets kind of loud and busy in the halls when kids transition out.
The doors will be closed. We'll have personnel and locations to ensure it's kept.
And then last question, which I think I already know the answer to it, but were there any accommodations or any adjustments we had to make to the facilities or costs associated with having the court come in to accommodate that? Or is it, is it a fairly smooth, seamless transition?
Notice how I had my, had my, said, talked about.
Sounds good discipline.
But I was ready to go. So no adjustments are necessary. As a matter of fact, they came in the spring and met with us to see if the facility met their needs. And they found that it did. And it actually works out very well because the justices can transition right off stage, I don't know what you call it, I need Miss Ketch, stage right or stage left? Which is it?
Please, stage right.
Stage right, thank you. Miss Ketch will be proud of it. Stage right. And there's actually dressing rooms right in the hallway, which is a very private area. And then right around the corner is Admin 2, which is where we're going to put them in the conference room and have they, things, things for like refreshments. So they think that the setup is actually ideal throughout our school.
And then last one, I promise, sorry. I know, it's a, it's a, are they going to be actually deciding the cases and ruling right then and there? Or they're just going to hear arguments and they'll rule at another time? Or are they going to come back in and say, okay, we've heard arguments at the nine o'clock period, we've ruled according to the plaintiff because of this and this? Or we've ruled because the defendant's board is this and this? You know what I mean? Is there going to be an explanation like that? Or is it simply just hearing oral arguments and how the process works?
According to the information, Mary Ann Lynch, by the way, was the representative that came, she was fantastic. According to the information she gave us, typically it's just the lawyers that are there that are, they're making their arguments. And then justices actually, when they go back into their, into our conference room in Admin 2, they're actually going to be talking a little bit about the case during that time. So there's, according to what she told us, she didn't indicate there'd be a ruling. I think they hear the case and the ruling is decided at a later date. I can't confirm that, but.
Lawyer? I'm sorry, shaking my head. You know, it's like the Supreme Court. They don't rule when they hear oral arguments. They shake hands, they need a clerk.
It's such a tight schedule that I can't imagine there's a capacity within the schedule to do that. I mean, it's, it's 30 minutes, 15-minute transition with questions, 30 minutes, it's the same thing. And it's, she says it's like clockwork. So based on that, I think, well, I'll defer to.
The lawyer.
No, they, I, I mean, no, they're not going to rule on anything. It's just oral arguments.
And your last part of this, the part three or five-part question, the financial piece. And so in terms of the financial piece, the only part I can answer is that the two court marshals weren't able to come that day. So they're going to meet at a later time with our school resource officers and myself to determine what type of security is necessary and whether we have to have local PD. Two marshals will be there and we'll have our own internal security, well, our SRO. But they'll let us know whether we have to have additional Scarborough police. We won't know that until the marshals meet with us.
Thank you. No more questions?
He rep.
The prosecution rep.
Anybody else?
I was just wondering if you already knew what the cases were?
We did. I went over that prior to you coming in, so.
I was going to go for my children.
No, no, I'm not trying to be funny. I just, there's, we've been given in advance what those cases are going to be. So when you receive the email from me, I'm going to have for you a link that'll bring you right to the Maine Supreme Court. And they're going to list.
Oh, they'll list them right there, yeah.
And we're going to provide that to our students and teachers and case. Like you were talking about, it's going to be an educational experience in the classroom.
Right.
They'll be able to go over and review those cases in advance and perhaps prepare questions on those if they want.
He's not spilling the beans tonight.
I have, to be honest, I have not read those four pages yet, but I'm a little prior to them.
He's not prepared to give full disclosure yet.
Very exciting though. We're very honored to be able to.
And Chris can't ask questions?
No.
You're out of town.
Last time I asked the judge a question, it didn't go well.
You're out of town that day.
I know, I'm going to be. Do you want you to be out of town that day? Is that what you're telling us?
I was just wondering, if everybody wanted to go, we don't have the capacity, do we?
We'll have to adjust it. If everybody does want to go, then we're going to have to do some kind of transition where there'll be, some of the school will go during one session and then we'll transition them out, which may impact the question and answer period. But if most of our students want to be a part of this, we might have to accommodate that.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
That's great.
Exciting. 6.2, preparation work for the November 17th school board retreat.
In preparation for that retreat, and the board will be renewed at that time, I thought it would be good to just take a few minutes tonight while we have a little bit of time and get some input from all of you. So I'd like to, I'd like to first direct you to the school board goals for 1516. And this is going to be pretty, not really exciting for people to be watching on, on TV. on TV, but I'm going to give you some time and I'll show you what I'm asking you to do in terms of getting some input in preparation for that meeting.
Okay, so for school board goals, what I'd like you to do is to look at the, what was committed to number fourteen, fifteen, and, and it's just your quick assessment, it will just give us a starting place in terms of looking at the new goals. If you identify that goal as being at level one, and all you need to do is to put one, that means it's done, we're done with it, drop it, it doesn't have a life beyond this plan. If you identify it as two, maybe it needs to be just refocused or refined or updated, okay? If it's a level three, it means keep going full force on this, maintain current effort and current focus on those, that goal. And level four is, this really needs, this is something that we probably are going to need to accelerate the effort on, okay? So it really, it's really much in the way of a gradation in terms of done to, oh my God, we still, this is really important, high priority, and we need to invest some time. Questions about that? And you, no names are required, but what I will do is have the synopsis for us, and I think it will just make it much easier for us to see how we're feeling about the goals. And I don't know that we did a formal reflection on the fourteen, fifteen goals for the board, so this would sort of constitute at least a brief swipe at that.
So you want us to do that now?
I have a question.
Yes.
I mean, these are all just general goals.
Yes, they always happen.
But I mean, I can't say to goal one, "Work with and evaluate superintendent, done."
No, it's, it's really, you're looking at the other, the goals have stayed basically the same, and, and what you're really, what you're really rating, Jody, is the A, B, C.
So not the specific goals?
No, those are, those are more, those are basically goals that have stayed in place. It's a way to clear a room, huh?
Get homework.
My sense is that you might be okay with that, or still finishing it?
Wrapping up.
I'm slow, that's why.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next piece that I would direct your attention to is the operating protocol. You have a copy of that as well? I'll just explain something about the copy that you have. It's, you see that it was actually adopted back in 2011, so it's been, it's been a longstanding protocol, and we have spent time every year looking at what we need to, or what the board, through a process, they feel they need to continue to focus on. The ones that are highlighted are the ones that through, since 2011, have been areas that the board has said, "We really need to put more effort here, this is a high priority for us." So the question really is, in not being swayed by the yellow highlight, because we've already focused on it, we may, that may still be a very high priority for you, and all you're doing is a ranking. So it's really to look at those and say, okay, going forward, given all the work that we have to do, given, given the sort of the state of the town, the state of the schools, what are your top five? And number one would go to your highest priority in terms of really focusing on that, number two would be the next highest, three, next highest, it's a little redundant, but I, but I think you know what I'm talking about. So you're basically ranking one through five, those things that you think really require us to, or you as a team, to really be reminded of and focus on, and maybe even talk about some strategies. Jody?
Always a question. So will this that we're doing right now?
I'm going to.
Be discussed further?
Oh, yes, yes, this is just the preliminary work, and instead of sending things out and waiting for you all to send things back, I thought we could just go through this, get this preliminary data done, and I will use it and bring it back on the seventeenth.
It's a nice way of saying not all of us respond to his emails.
Right.
What?
I said it's a nice way of saying not all of us respond timely to your emails.
In some, in your visit, and you carved out this time, and I knew it would only take a few minutes, it's easier to do it.
And so this will be discussed with leadership too, like all of us will be sitting November seventeenth?
No, it's really, it's really primarily the school board's retreat, and, and, you
Do you want these back, Dr. Turner?
I'll just grab them when we wrap up.
Take another one of these that has the back to it.
Show me that again, just, Kelly.
About what happened at the school.
Oh.
Which one does it have a second side?
Oh, you know what, there was, there was a, there was an original that was two pages.
Just somebody might only have one page.
Yeah. You got it, you were the winner, you got that other one, there we go, thanks. I share this with you, this comes from Todd Jensen, and just so you have a good sense of the work that was done, basically, starting in the spring and going all the way through the summer, lots of good and important work in all the areas.
Did you ask him to send us a list of those persons who are now on the maintenance staff?
There's a maintenance directory, I think, isn't there, Joanne? Slash, everybody new?
I have to look into that.
We didn't, we didn't have to do that.
Maintenance department or the custodial department?
No, 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 the maintenance department.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't.
Yeah, but I'll look, I didn't think to look on the website, but it, I don't know. I just wrote that, you know, in addition to the top, blah, 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 custodians, it says here we have two new excellent maintenance people, and I just wrote who here.
We'll need to give you a directory, or we'll give that to you from Todd.
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll give it to the whole board. There have been.
And how is Kelly, is she back in?
No.
Kelly Crosby, no?
No, she's doing well, but she's not back.
Very extensive list, very thorough, is there anything on the list that should have gotten done that you didn't even have a chance to get to?
This is what he said, that it has been done, okay, that was, oh, that he had hoped to do?
Yeah, is there anything like that needed to be done that wasn't?
I think that was pretty much his, his to-do list. I don't know if you've ever seen Todd's list, how he does things, pretty meticulous.
Oh.
I need to.
That's the teacher, that's the future project manager.
Project manager, yes, exactly.
You folks should know, under the middle school, the two main windows on the south side of the cafeteria were replaced due to deterioration. When those were installed, there was a space, a space left, it was about, what, two and a half inches?
Mm-hmm.
We were in sue mode, three years, three years before it ever got resolved, it was awful.
Wasn't there, was there retention associated with?
Probably.
Was there retention associated?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. But what transpired is when the contractor was hired, there wasn't much work, and the last six months that we had, last six months, about the last six months, they hauled off the clerk of the works, and they went to Massachusetts on another job because they were getting paid more, and they sent us a real idiot to be nice. Oh, what a time we had. Oh, I still cringe when I think about it.
One last piece, and that is, what we've done in the past is, you've generated some topics that, you know, you're intrigued by, things that you want to learn a little bit more about. This is not the only time that you'll have a chance to generate those, but I'm ready and willing to jot down some topics, you know, for example, the thing that we're exploring now, and it's kind of been coming from a number of multiple directions, is really looking at school schedules, and consistent with the whole calendar thing and trying to bring that in. So obviously, we're going to need to probably spend more time, and your workshop for October will actually be, I think it's for October, right? Will, will actually be attendance at the regional meeting, and in advance of that, we're going to have our meeting with the board and the leadership council to talk about school schedules and some of the things that we need to be thinking about. I sent an email out to everybody with a couple of dates on it. What other topics, what other, what other, you know, things are you hearing about that you, that you think that the board really needs to spend a little bit more time learning about?
I feel like there's one that we talked about at our last meeting, and we said, "Oh, that could be a workshop," and now I can't remember.
At the last meeting? I might have it written down.
I mean, I'm, I'm in a precarious position of not being able to participate in the, in the future workshop sessions, but I think if there are areas to discuss, I think it is a lot of community outreach, communication, goal setting, that kind of stuff, and I think we always seem to kind of circle back around those key issues, whether it's budget, or it's positive things, or calendar, or something like that, you know, maybe bringing in, I know at the research center, Mayment Research Center, they had some marketing people that were free, last year I think it was, that they had been working on a, a social media type of outreach program that they had grant money for, the grant had dried up, but they had the resources and they were going to maybe come in and help us a little bit with that stuff. So maybe focusing around those general topics of outreach, communication, you know.
Getting out ahead of.
It was inquiry, seemed to be inquiry, things learned.
Okay.
I mean, that was it.
Most of us know what the obstacles are when, when we're coming forward with something. Say like with changing our calendar, you know, last year, I mean, most of us thought that there could be some parental pushback, and had we maybe approached it a little differently.
Well, didn't we decide we were going to have a calendar committee?
Yes, but what I'm saying is with other instances similar to that, so say, say somebody says, "Oh, hey, you know, by the way, we're going to change to have something." We're letting kids out two hours later, or something.
Right.
And all of a sudden, we know that people are going to be up in arms over it, maybe we ought to think about, before we bring it forward publicly, that we've.
And we can, we can move those things onto the calendar as you need them, you know, I think there was, I mean, you basically hosted a public workshop that specifically dealt with the calendar, because there was so much interest.
Right.
That's not typical, in terms of what happened.
And I wasn't thinking about the workshop around specific issues, I was thinking more along a general, a general process, or a general, I don't want to say a policy, but you know, how we approach issues in public, how we get, you know, what's the best communication method, regardless of what the issue is. You know, more, more general practice kind of things, not necessarily policy and locking us into things, but a general approach of, you know, how should we be getting out ahead of the curve maybe a little bit, or what are ways we can do to get ahead of the issues, identify them, get ahead of them, communicate that, that kind of stuff.
Do you mean surrounding the budget?
No, any issue, any issue, yeah. Like, do we have, do we have like communications, for example, communications is really the point, point contact person for outside questions coming in, you know, or is that an ad hoc type of issue depending on what the status is? Is that something that's determined every time? Or are there generally established roles and responsibilities, you know, the chair does media responding, or something along those lines? But just have kind of a general framework in place of how, how those responses should be organized and come, you know, somebody doing an FAQ page, how are we getting it up on the, on the website, who's responsible for that? Who's, who's organizing the whole big picture kind of thing?
So just to piggyback on that thought, mine was kind of a extension of that, was more about, you know, whether we might want to sit and talk about our approach with, one, the community, and two, the town council. So, you know, what, what might we brainstorm about in terms of how we might do our work differently in the community and with the council? I mean, because, you know, this year we came up with just the two finance groups trying to do that work, and, you know, I'm just thinking, there's a lot to talk right now about how else can things be done, so that be the case. Can we then have our own discussion so that we have something to put forth?
I would, I would like to sometime discuss, one of my personal priorities for this next year is to reinstate seventh grade activities, and, and that's going to take a cachet of money that we currently don't have. And, and I've asked the question before, and I've been told, for example, that gate receipts go into the general fund. That's fine, but what do those gate receipts pay for? So I would like to see sometime at one of our workshops, a breakdown of, how many people does it take to run a football game? I'm not talking about the coaches or the officials, I'm talking about the athletic director, and personnel that the athletic director has to see gets paid. How many people does that take? And the same thing for other activities, I, we don't charge for too many activities, but, and, and at a basketball game, for example, I know there are usually three or four people taking money for the tickets, and they're, how much does that cost us, and does the gate receipt that we get cover that cost?
Maybe I can broaden that out a little bit and just look at possible revenue. Maybe I can broaden that out a little bit, and just look at possible revenue sources and more efficiency of operations, because I think it translates not just to the athletics side of things. We've, we've been exploring that for a couple of years now with Kate and Mike and I, trying to look at different ways to evaluate the whole system of athletics and activities in terms of a cost efficiency basis, whether it's pooling resources, or partnering with other groups, or revenue generation, be it sponsorships, or booster organizations, or how we, how we collectively look at that structure. So, I think, I think your, your focus on the particulars of the games, of the football game, let's say, or basketball, with gate fees and stuff, I think that's a great first step into a much broader picture of starting to talk about the structural needs of the community as a whole. I mean, we've seen it with seventh, elimination of seventh grade sports and activities, and the, I don't wanna say the, the response from the community of, how do we preserve that? What can we do to help keep that? That's a connection that has to come through a collaborative effort of, of sitting down with all the stakeholders, for lack of a better word, with parents, boosters, administration, board members, what are we doing collectively as a town? Because if we start doing, tweaking things here and there, that's what we've always done, and we've kind of created this amalgamous system that is difficult to control, not everybody understands the intricacies between community services, and our, and the administration, and who's managing what, how the scheduling works. There's so many tentacles that involve that, that I think, I think you're right, it needs to be addressed, and I would pull that into a much bigger.
This stimulated my question. Because when I saw this, first of all, I thought we should have had this back, and I thought we should have had some preparation to know it was coming.
Well, this is what?
The hockey.
Oh, the hockey team.
The hockey piece. If people have been talking about this for six months, then.
It's nothing. It's very new to me.
Since July.
Absolutely new to me.
Well, then, that's wrong, in my opinion also, but that's beside the point. If we're going to go out on a limb and allow two young people to come to Scarborough to play on our hockey team, it's a risk. It's not gonna cost us any money, but it's still a risk, they're not our students. They could be, they're probably wonderful kids. But we eliminated seventh grade activities two years ago, and when the parents wanted to fund those activities, we were told that that's not possible because you eliminated, meaning us, the sport. And it's too much to manage, we don't have enough personnel to manage that.
But that, if I, sorry, that's not the reason why it wasn't allowed, though, Jackie. That's not why. That's not why. But, but, sorry, go ahead.
If we can do this, we should have been able to figure out a way to support our own students, even if it was the parents paying the freight, which they wanted to do. Now, I don't wanna get into a philosophical discussion about that.
Not philosophical.
I'm simply saying that we need to work harder to provide better for our students.
Okay, so I, what I captured was finances, revenue sources, athletics and activities, for example, gate receipts, and really digging into that. It might be something more for finance committee, because as Chris said, there has been some ongoing efforts there. But this was really to just get some topics up there, not to solve those problems right now, but.
So, I have two more.
Okay.
One is, I think we need to do a really good job of looking at our facilities this year.
Long-term facilities plan.
Yeah, and come up with a short and long-term plan. And then, my last one is, a way in which we can bring simplification and clarification to the school budget, what it is, what it looks like, what's in it. Physically, heavily, heavily. We reduce that to a simpler form for the community to understand. Maybe someone mentioned to me the idea of having Budget Process 101 class, one evening at the high school in the auditorium, where you had different important key people to speak on different components of it. What is it that happens between November and May or June when you vote?
But I think there's also, part of that is, we can do that, and that's great, but we get people. We also need to change how it's presented, because people aren't gonna show up for that seminar, Class 101 on the, how the school budgets develop. They're just not gonna show up, they've got 100 million other things to do.
Well, it's just, it's just one idea from somebody, so.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Whatever, it would just, as long as there's something that brings it.
You know, I mean, it's worth trying and showing that we're giving an effort to explain it to people, but I also think the way it is presented is overwhelming.
Right.
And it just needs to be explored.
And I think, just to talk about topics.
Yes.
It may be beneficial to have one set of topics on how to interact on the community level, and a second workshop on how to interact with the council. Because as we've said in the past, there really are two different tactics and strategies that are necessary for each different audience.
I already said that.
Right.
But separately, not in one thing.
Yeah, but it's okay, like, so, you know, to talk about, what's the best way to get the data out, or the information out to the community, that's one, that's one discussion. What's the best way to streamline or make the communication with the council more effective? That's kind of a separate issue. There is some overlap, obviously, there always is, but, but it's almost like there's, they could be two distinct different workshop sessions, I think.
And what Kelly said at our last meeting about somehow putting on our website frequently asked questions, and explaining our terminology. We do education speak, and, quite frankly, the majority of people don't understand it. And, and we do it frequently because we're so invested in it, it's just part of our psyche now, and part of our vocabulary. And that's why you'll notice I ask questions, it, so it has to be explained, so people know what we're talking about. I truly do know, most times, what we're talking about, but.
That's the best question, Jackie, one you already know the answer to.
Any other, again, this is not an exhaustive list, it was really to just capture what you may have been thinking about. And I think we've captured some of the things that we've talked about before, some things going forward, the simplification of the language.
I think, I think a NEASK update of the high school, that's a big, that's a big issue, at an appropriate time. Where are we at? Where do we need to be? What's moving forward?
I don't know where this one would fall in, and it's, I'm feeling Kelly's thought, but she hasn't brought it up, so I'm just throwing it out there so we can.
You can tell? You know where it's going?
So, we can figure out where it would fall, or if it would even fall in. I don't even know if it's in our wheelhouse.
Yes.
But we talked about ways, it's almost, there needs to be a PR sort of done for the high school with the middle school students, meaning, is there a way to have a mentorship program where a seventh grader is matched with a sophomore? And they go up once a month, or once a quarter, and do something? Because seventh graders aren't getting into the high school, so all they're seeing is the auditorium and the gymnasium, that's about it. And Shevres, and McCauley, and whoever, are saying, "Come on in, check out our cool school."
Come meet our cool kids, we'll let you sit in on classes, and things like that. So, we're losing the, the marketing campaign to the private schools, because parents are invited to those as well, not only just the kids. So, the parent's like, "Oh, my gosh, the kids are so nice, and answered all our questions at lunch." I'm like, "We could do, we could do that, because we have nice kids and cafeteria."
And our new cafeteria.
You know, I'm just, it's not that simple, I know it's not that simple, but, you know, schedules, it could be a nightmare, but I think it's worth it in the long run, so seventh graders have something to aspire to, and, and it could be an ongoing thing, where the seventh grader is the sophomore, then it's an eighth grader, you know, eighth junior.
And then, when they're freshmen, they now have the senior buddy that was there, and, you know, the other kids are doing it.
Got it?
Idea.
Anything else that you wanna add?
Well, that looks like about.
That looks like about a year's worth of work.
That gets us to two meetings.
But I would recommend that, if we're gonna do that high school, middle school mentoring thing, that be one of the sooner topics, because all the marketing material is going to the parent's rate of the seventh graders. And they have their shadow days in February, March, and then it's too late. They send their deposit checks, and they're gone.
I guess that I would have liked to see an update, too, on the standardized testing, I know we're transitioning out of State 1.
That's gonna be.
We automatically got State 1.
That's part of, that's part of our regular calendar of workshop topics.
And typically, yeah.
Yeah, I know that, but I mean, just to get an idea.
That's the reporting.
That will definitely be there. Yeah, the workshop schedule is already populated with some things that are regular updates, including updates on the student-centered plan. And we're now, like, we're now moving to some dashboards, which are sort of using just a different format, and some, some different symbols to really look at, are things on track? It's more like a, kind of like a, I don't wanna make it more complicated than what it is. It's really, it's a visual representation of what's happening in the high school, what's happening in the middle school, what's happening in, you know, each of the, in the departments and so on, and, and where we are in terms of being on track or not on track with the commitments that we've made in the 24-month plan. So, and so that will be introduced as well. But that's a regular update of the schedule.
Do you have your laptop yet?
No.
Two weeks, or one week.
We're supposed to be getting them next week, hopefully, if everyone turns in their paperwork. But it's, as right now, no, not a lot of people have.
It's already rolled Monday, and it will take about seven to eight days to roll out all this, our laptop.
It's gonna be seniors first, juniors, sophomores.
Of course. You've gone without them for the longest time.
And you can do it before it went out, so it's on the table.
You earned them. Is there anything else?
There is yet.
Nobody else have anything they want to add? No? You're okay?
I got it, got everything.
Okay, go ahead, move to a turn. Move to a turn. Click it. There you go. All in favor?
Wait. There we go.
No, all in favor? Sorry, did you have another?
No, I was saying.